Comes on or called the meeting order. Welcome to a special board meeting in the Vanier Dation District, Board of Directors, February 15th, 2021. If you all want to sign me with the service of the flag, please. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America. And Secretary, will you call the roll, please?
Yes, Division one, here. Division two, here. Division three, here. Division four, here. Division five.
Here.
For those who were present there.
Repeat performance every year.
Okay, we are opening the room back up. Can you hear us?
I can hear you.
And we can hear you. You sure can.
All right, yay.
Hey, we're back.
We've been having internet issues.
Yeah.
So I'm still like not here accordingly.
She's not here, okay. Maybe we can have John.
I'm not here either.
Yeah, Greg and I are not here.
Does it say it's December 15th special? That one?
Oh, I didn't even see that.
What's going on?
Oh.
I could have done that.
We have audio problems.
I think you did that. That's true, I'm not going to pay that.
Yeah.
I heard that.
And then you sent something to email and things.
Let me tell you all about it.
I wanted to go to the contractors. But I had a nasty cough.
Got it? How'd you get it, Rich?
He blames me. He got it too soon to have forgotten it for me.
24 hours.
Well, I didn't catch it from here.
Driving down the road.
Yeah, he didn't get it.
I am, but maybe I just need to be.
I got it. I got it from him.
Yeah, you do occasionally.
All right.
I do.
Yeah, process.
And let's not read.
Right here.
Before we get started, I'm here.
I'm going to make the announcement about.
Yeah, you should go ahead.
Okay, so stepping back, if we, if at this point we would take comment from public comments for any item not on the agenda, if somebody would like to comment, start on your phone. At this time, items pertinent to NID today. Okay, seeing that, next we're going to add an agenda item just for, since it rained, so we can have an update from staff about the weather conditions. So we'll be doing that next. We'll do that first.
I'm sure that we're having because of the storm, internet difficult.
Yes, and if those of you that are watching, attempting to watch, or maybe can't even hear us, and I shouldn't talk, we are having internet issues today. So we're currently up and running. Some member of the public, if you can hear us with, give us a, give us some hands up.
I can give it to them.
There we go. Thank you, Brian Phillips. It worked. Okay, several of you, all right, we're working. Okay, so we'll have an update for all interested in what happened with the weather. We'll have the close water organist manager give us an update.
All right. Morning, morning, staff and public. Just a very quick update. It's usually easier to do with slides, but we can go off the top of our heads here. The information I'll give you today is basically from December 13th, so the day before, so kind of right after the first bulk of that storm moved through, we captured the numbers and the data. I don't have anything from today, but what I can tell you is it was a very impressive storm, and that continues, it's going to continue again tonight. We had over six inches of precipitation fall at our Bowman Lake reporting station, and again, that's old data, so it's even more than that now. And I just got a report from the Hydro Division that about 24 inches of snow had gone up there, so very good news in that regard. Overall, our precipitation for the year sits at 25.21 inches of rain, and that is a huge shot in the arm. We are at 136% of average, so very good numbers. Keep in mind, the total for all of last year was only 34 inches of rain, so we're rapidly catching all of last year's total. Next week's forecast calls for rain nearly every single day, not as much, but steady and slow, we'll take it. That's perfect for us at NID. Overall, reservoir storage is the one indication where we're still lacking a little bit. We're at 150,000 acre feet, which is about 85% of our average for this time of year, so okay, not great, but okay, and then 56% of overall capacity. So we're roughly about, what, 50,000 acre feet from average still. So, you know, more work to do from Mother Nature, and so far it's off to a very good start, and we, fingers crossed, that it continues. All right. Any questions?
Are we able to store everything that's coming through?
Great question. So there's been moving targets with curtailments. I'm happy to report that just before this last round of storms hit, the state did indeed lift all curtailments, and we are able to capture whatever is coming our way per our water right.
Okay, thank you, Chip. Good news. All right. Next item is the consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to accept the consent agenda. I wanted to talk next week. I'm going to move to accept the consent agenda.
One more time.
We're having internet issues.
And I had a drinking holiday, snobs, or whatever. Okay, I am going to move to accept the consent agenda.
Well done, and I will move, I will second that motion. Yes, there you go.
Okay, move to second, is any public comment? Would you like to comment on this item, start on your phone? All right, seeing none, Madam Secretary, will you call the roll, please?
Division five?
Yes.
Division one?
Yes.
Division three?
Aye.
Division four?
Aye.
Division two?
Aye. Thank you. Okay, general orders. 2022 annual budget, out of the version 2021-37, directed by my staff. Is that Jennifer?
I am, thank you, President Beerwagen. You know, we did a fairly lengthy presentation at the last budget workshop, so I do have a short presentation for you, and then I'm happy to answer any questions. I did want to point out that at your table, you do have a revised fund summary sheet. Director Peters was so gracious, she found I had picked up the wrong cell for one of the, one of the cells, so we corrected that for you. So when we get to that, we'll review that.
Jennifer, could I?
Yes, ma'am.
Tables like this, could we have like a kind of summary at the end of the columns? So like, well.
So that you could see total revenue.
Yeah, or like the total revenue at the bottom of the column or something.
Absolutely. No problem at all. So just as a point of reference, we will be incorporating this into a normal budget book, so we'll take care of all that when we print it. Yeah, no problem. All right, so as we reviewed last time, we are generally keeping the budget projections and assumptions very, very conservative, and this is by design. One, there is still some volatility associated with the economy as far as COVID is related. You know, as soon as we think things are coming back to more normal, then we kind of get thrown another curveball. So from an economic market perspective, there is still some volatility on the stock market, so for example, we did keep our investment revenue fairly conservative, we did keep recreation revenue conservative, and then also in consideration that the board is going through the Plan for Water process, and a large component of that process is going to be to do some strategic planning, confirm or come up with a new mission, a vision, and strategic priorities. And so to that end, we determined it was best to keep the budget conservative, because as everybody knows, it is much easier to increase a budget moving into the fiscal year than it is to reduce your budget once you have those monies appropriated. So for revenue purposes, as I stated, it's generally conservative, and this is just prudent financial practice so that we don't plan for more money that we may not get. So this does not include a rate increase for raw or treated water rates in 2022. We do anticipate bringing a rate study forward, and if the rate study did determine that rates were going to need to be increased, then that would be considered in some type of budget amendment. But it also should be noted that even if we do a rate study in the middle of 2022, it doesn't necessarily have to be implemented that first year.
Jennifer, another question on that. The assumption is that we are not having or applying the drought pricing that is currently in place, is that correct?
The revenue assumptions were not based off of any rate or drought surcharge that was included in the Prop 218 study. They were just based off of a very small escalation that was applied on a year-over-year basis. And so one of the things we talked about last time, and Director Hall, I think you actually referenced it or requested it, was that we come back and have a more thorough conversation regarding, do we need the drought surcharge or do we not? So it was not necessarily included in these revenue projections.
Okay, thank you for that. That's what I thought we talked about.
So that would be when we were talking about making a plan for, action plan for drought earlier in the year.
It's a surcharge. That surcharge was included in that revenue forecast.
I got that part, but when we would add it on.
So it's currently added on, it's added on by the drought contingency plan that the board recently adopted, and remember, we're kind of in that hybrid stage where our actual adopted drought contingency plan doesn't exactly line up with the stages that were included in our urban water management plan or in our agricultural water management plan. So the drought surcharge is still in place, but what we will do is we will evaluate the revenue that was associated with it, and the drought surcharge is intended to cover any increased expenses that are associated with water conservation activities and additional outreach to the community, as well as any decrease in revenue that's associated with the decrease in volume for treated water. So with that said, we do need to do a thorough analysis as to whether or not that drought surcharge is required and prudent, so we will be coming back to the board in the January timeframe to have this discussion more fully and to vet those numbers. Right now, staff is going to kind of do an analysis on the numbers to kind of align our expenses or revenue reductions with the need for that surcharge, so we will come back with recommendations.
That's the need going into the 22, that's what the point I was getting at.
Correct, so that would be going into, but so the drought surcharge still exists because the drought contingency plan is effective, is still effective, so we are in that hybrid stage two right now. One of the things that Chip and I have been talking about is the drought surcharge bills for raw water have already been sent, so we will take a look at those and determine whether or not those revenues are required to meet the cost of service that was required during drought conditions. So we will come revisit it.
Okay, Director Peters.
And so just so, to be abundantly clear, so the treated water, so the raw water, they wouldn't do it because they don't till April of season, but treated water, so it's assumption if we don't have any decisions made, treated water customers will receive a surcharge on their January bill. Is that right?
The surcharge for, no, and let's.
At the end of this year.
The surcharge for raw water customers was already calculated. Chip, do you want to come?
Yeah, sure, I can hopefully jump in. So the treated water customers have been paying the drought surcharge since the adoption of the resolution in July, July 1st. Raw water customers were not billed because they had already paid their bills for the season, so what we did is we sent out a supplemental billing after irrigation season, it just went out two weeks ago or a week and a half ago, that really just takes the rate since July 1, adds the drought surcharge to it, and they pay that difference. That billing went out, like I said, about a week and a half.
So my question is, because we still have a declared drought.
Yes.
Treated water will continue to pay the drought surcharge in January going forward.
Correct. Now, and the same would hold true for our irrigation customers if we're still in drought come irrigation season, pending this further study and analysis on whether the rates are warranted or not.
So last year, we made that declaration after the bills were sent out.
Correct.
This year, we might do it a little earlier with the anticipation, okay, this is bad news, but here's the bad news, and it gets better, then we'll adjust.
Yeah, ultimately, our goal is to get the information to our customer base as early as possible, and to make the decision whether we're still in a drought or not as early as possible. We hope to do that in the first few months of next year, because really, the billing goes out at the end of February, we need to have all our ducks in a row by then. Hopefully, Mother Nature will give us an answer by then, a very clear one.
The drought contingency stage that was previously voted on by the board is still in effect today.
Yeah.
Yes, you're correct. The revenues that were projected do not include that surcharge revenue. So the revenue is generally flat, especially as it pertains to property taxes, we're very conservative, just at a minor 2%. We also, one of the big modifications this year for the budget was to distribute investment revenue by funds, so it's appropriated by fund proportional to each fund's fair share or portion of the actual pooled cash balance, which is a more normal method of doing it. Per policy right now, the board policy does actually state that all investment revenue should go into the water fund, so we will require a policy modification to address this. The capital programs were kept extremely light, so that is definitely something to keep in mind. We do show some carryover balance. Overall, our revenues are exceeding our expenditures for the upcoming 2022 year. However, I limit to take that as that we're, you know, we're great and have piles of money. We have a very, very small capital program, but that was also by design. So part of the Plan for Water process, it will, once it's completed, then dovetail into a more significant infrastructure master planning process where we'll actually come up with improvements. So we do need to keep money, as much money as possible to pay for those future improvements.
Jennifer?
Yes, ma'am.
Also, the revenue and expenses or the capital program specifically does not take into account the acquisition of the South Yuba Canal.
Correct. That is, that is correct.
Important thing to keep in mind.
That is a very important thing to keep in mind. So there will be also operational and capital expenditures associated with the South Yuba Canal. There is some revenue associated with the South Yuba Canal related to the Deer Creek Powerhouse. We did project that revenue this year to be, to be fairly low. However, one of the, my concerns about the South Yuba Canal is the need for additional catastrophic reserve in the event that there was a catastrophic natural event such as fire or avalanche that did impact that elevated flume. So from that standpoint, that was one of the other reasons why we kept the budgets fairly low and conservative. Some of the other major budget changes that we talked about last time was we did add capital subfunds to each one of the three major parent funds, so we have Fund 10 Water, Fund 30 Recreation, and Fund 50 Hydroelectric, and then we added, essentially we just added a five, so Fund 15 is water capital, Fund 35 is recreation capital, and then Fund 55 is hydro capital. We are also, we did modify the format of the budget a little bit, and this was to better illustrate the movement of money between funds. There were some indications in previous years that transfers were being double counted as revenue, so a transfer is when anytime there's money moved in between funds. So it's not classified as new revenue because it is money that the district already holds, so that's an important nuance to understand. And then we are also looking at reserves a little bit separately, and we talked about the reserves last time. We are not completely compliant with policy, but we are showing the funding of reserves for each fund, and we will review that.
So our reserves are not inflation protected?
No.
And, but you're, you're looking into that.
Well, the reserves, yeah, so it depends on the type of the reserve, right? So they're not necessarily inflation protected, and it really depends on the particular reserve and how it's operated. So from the catastrophic and excess insurance coverage required reserve, it's stated by policy to be $5 million minimum, $10 million maximum, and it's to be split evenly between water and hydropower. That reserve does not escalate in any way. It's a stated value, it could be up to $10 million. We funded it at the minimum value this year. But in comparison, an operational reserve is a function of, it is 50% or six months of annual operating expenditures. And so as operating expenditures, they do address what we believe to be increases in inflation or costs of doing business from a labor or materials perspective, so you could inherently say that the reserves do address annual projected inflation for the following year, but not necessarily year-over-year-over-year.
Because we keep increasing.
Right, right.
Because the Fed today came out with a projection of three interest rate hikes for next year.
For inflation. Yeah, we are definitely experiencing a significant increase in the cost of materials across the board, and we're also, as we have spoken about with the board earlier, we are experiencing labor cost increases, and this is being experienced by agencies and private or public across the entire country right now. As you can just pop on CNN and you see it called a great resignation, right? And so people are starting to make very significant modifications to their employment or their employment desires, whether that be moving out of state or doing what they always wish to do. So from that perspective, yes, you are seeing labor increases.
Jennifer, one of the points you made I found was interesting, and one of the things I've been wondering about relative to the budget is the current year budget, as I recall, is about a $90 million budget, and this year we have a, I believe, $76 million budget?
Yeah, right in there.
Yeah, so I've been curious in my mind, how do we get from 90 to 76? And some, one of the things you said, though, is that we're double count, we had been double counting revenue, and so that, aha, okay, so when, when hydro did a transfer to water of the significant $6 million or $10 million, we showed it as revenue to water affecting, creating that end result of 90? I mean, how did, why do we have this huge disparity between the current year budget and this year's budget?
One of the major components of the significant decrease you're seeing year-over-year is associated with the reduction in labor. So as the board is aware, we reduced, I believe it was about 15 positions, 14 positions, which is a significant savings. On the flip side of that coin, we did have some salary increases, but those are also included, but the, on a year-over-year basis, the position, the expenses decreased by the removal of the positions was about $2.25 million, whereas the total cost of the employment contracts across the board for the two and a half years totaled about $2.25 million. So we are more than adequately reduced, or being able to offset any increased labor costs with the reduction in labor. The second thing that you're seeing is there was, there's been a fairly significant decrease in the capital budgets from, when compared to previous years. It is difficult to compare this year's budget and last year's budget, there was a lot of, it just wasn't very clear in the way that it was presented, and we've modified the budget significantly, so some, it's a little bit of comparing apples to oranges as well. So I would have to go through and pull apart each piece of the budget to give you a better line by line.
Please don't take the time to do that, but it is, I mean, it's pretty startling. And I think that going forward, rather than look retrospectively unless that's helpful, but looking prospectively, I think that, I think creating the continuity in history that I know you will under the new model will be helpful, and then we'll put the past history behind us.
Yeah, we're going to have to. There is some issues with the numbers presented in the historical budget, so typically you do provide a five-year look back and then a five-year projection. When Debbie and I started going to the five-year look back, it's difficult to tie out the numbers to any stated financials from, there's a, there's a discrepancy between the budget and our financials, and so we are unable to tie out the numbers from '18 to '19 to anything that we know to be valid through our audited financials. So we do have some difficulties in going backwards, but moving forward, you will see the traditional five-year history and then the five-year projection. Debbie, do you have anything to add?
No, I don't. I think it might be some portions of the budget, like now, when we are working through a budget, you typically run mid-year, and we haven't really finalized the prior year. So often, you may see sort of an estimate of how you think that year, the prior year landed, and so, and typically you would update, like right now, we could certainly update your 2020 actual, since 2020 is done and that. So there's a little bit of a timing difference and a little bit of difference in formatting and how you're presenting, so wherever those polls are coming in, may include transfers in that are already counted here, and if you're looking globally at that. So as Jennifer said, you would kind of need to pull apart each aspect to kind of address your question to see if it's really truthful about, you know, that difference between, between the revenues. So it's, I think with this format going forward, you're going to see a little bit better formatting for you, but we do have to remember timing, like right now, we couldn't give you what 21 is going to look like, right? So our prior year, we're still in it, and we're going to make, we made estimates, but it will change, and so, you know, by the time our budget to actuals come out, come forth, and we'll get the 2021 completed, we'll have the actuals for you, and we'll tie it directly to the audit. So it is a little bit of a timing difference when you're publishing some of this data, and some of it has to be estimates because you just haven't finished the year end or it's not complete as far as getting audited numbers together. So you might be seeing some of that, too.
Yeah.
So is that why we see that word forecast for 2021?
Forecast, it's an important word.
Yeah, one of the things that occurs after fiscal year closes is not only do you have invoices trickling and that may have not been paid, right? Because the month of December is still a working month for all the work that we do, so we get invoiced after the fact. But what also happens is that you see major accruals made at the close of fiscal year for OPEB or accrued liabilities for absences or whatever it is. And so that does modify your fund balance once the fiscal year end is closed, so what you'll see is doing into the future is bringing a budget amendment back sometime, you know, first, second quarter, whenever we get our financials pinned down, to give you an adjusted fund, beginning year fund balance, and that'll show anything that was rolled over from an encumbrance perspective, from a purchase order perspective, and it'll also give you a truer fund balance that then shows or has all of those accruals in it.
Yeah, I mean, I think this was all, everybody wanted this.
Yeah, they have.
A deep eye, thank you for doing it. I'm not as concerned about the discrepancy, it just shows that we've got some people who really know how to do it, so thank you. I mean, we have to go into this year very lean with the flexibility to accept South Yuba Canal with the flexibility that something else may happen, and this gives it, gives us that flexibility, and then, and you know that maintenance will, and everybody will keep up with the maintenance, and so we won't have hopefully not too much deferred maintenance because that, you know, keep it on a timely track. So I'm comfortable going this lean. I think it's great because we need to, we need to find out where we're at. This is the start of a process, it's going to take a year or so to really feather out, so thank you.
Yeah, and one of the things, I think I've warned everybody about this before, I am extremely fiscally conservative, so sometimes you'll have to wrestle me, money out of me just until I get a higher comfort level with proposing the funding of projects. But I promise, we won't be this cheap moving forward. All right, so we'll do a quick overview of the funds, and we already talked about this, but you, we are all familiar with Fund 10 Water Operations, Fund 12 is Capacity Fees, those are set by the fee study, we are going to be redoing the fee study this coming year, so those expenditures are very tight, so you don't see any expenditures for any capacity increasing projects in the budget. Water capital is 15, so one thing that's important to note is from an audit perspective, if you're ever trying to tie out your budget to your financials, which you should be able to do, it can be a little bit, it can be a little, not difficult, but challenging from the aspect that financials are presented in a very specific way for audit purposes, but for, for us, Fund 10, Fund 12, Fund 15, now I've caught it, I can't talk either, Fund 21 and Fund 22, they're all inherently subfunds of Fund 10, so they're rolled up in the audit for that. But this will allow us to, having new capital funds will allow us to more easily capitalize our assets on an annual basis and then keep track of those expenditures and also report out on them. A lot of the But for, for us, Fund 10, Fund 12, Fund 15, now I've caught it, I can't talk either. Fund 21 and Fund 22, they're all inherently sub-funds of Fund 10, so they're rolled up in the audit for that. But this will allow us to, having a new capital funds will allow us to more easily capitalize our assets on an annual basis and then keep track of those expenditures and also report out on them. A lot of the changes that we are proposing to make will make your financials report outs on a monthly and quarterly basis a little bit easier to understand and tie out. One of the challenges we've had is that our current monthly reports or quarterly reports, they don't actually tie out very well, the budget and the account, financials are disconnected. And so we're trying to align the budget with our financials. Hill and Rodeo Flat, our assessment districts, those are associated with infrastructure improvements that were previously constructed. One of the assessment districts still has some loan debt service obligation that was associated with State Water Resources Control Board loan. That was partially with the assessment district and partially for water operations. And then we also have Rodeo Flat, both are assessment districts that have some debt, some type of debt obligation. We have Recreation Operations, Recreation Capital, Hydroelectric, Hydroelectric Capital, so that goes to the 30, 35, Fund 50, Fund 55. And then lastly, the new fund, which is the cost allocation. So this is where we took all overhead expenditures that were previously being expensed underneath Fund 10, and we pulled them out into their own fund. And then the costs to pay for those expenses will be allocated amongst the three operating funds based off of a cost allocation formula that we talked about last time. So here we have the staffing table that we presented last time. As you can note, we are reducing staffing by 15 people. However, it should be noted that this does not reflect any staffing requirements that would be associated with the South Yuba Canal. So we do plan to come back to, and we're, we are trying to figure out if we can utilize existing staff or if we need to hire additional staff for the South Yuba Canal. But we will be coming back to the board at a later date with a full presentation, which will also include a budget amendment for staffing operation and then potential capital improvement.
Because this chart includes the CFO and the HR manager. And then I'm wondering, how many direct reports do you have?
That's a, thank you, Greg. That's like asking when my kid's birthdays are.
Because that's a big, that's a big load for supervisory, you know, the supervisory responsibilities with nine direct reports is a lot. I just point that out.
And that magic number is five?
Well, I mean, I, I think it's flexible, but nine is a lot. And plus, without the CFO in place and without an HR manager in place, that's a lot of load. So I, I just am pointing it out to the board and leave a door open for you to be able to reflect back to us what the impact of that is to you as time goes on.
For sure. And without Mr. Jones, I certainly kind of carry that workload. But he is amazingly supportive and very competent. So I think between the two of us, we're, we're able to juggle it pretty well, anyway.
Thanks, Greg.
And then only one other thing to note in this particular table, there does appear that administration got a significant increase in staffing, and that's not the case. That's actually associated with moving information technology underneath administration.
It was from finance, is that where they?
Correct.
Oh, no, that makes sense.
Yeah, finance, you know, finance is a, kind of a high-stress department from the standpoint that they work on a lot of deadlines, have a lot of, lots of balls in the air all the time. And we're really going to be spending the next fiscal year focusing on the finances and making everything more efficient for Debbie, so her job isn't so difficult. And so I felt that it was prudent to move IT out of finance, and they weren't getting a whole lot of attention in finance. And from my perspective, moving forward into the future, you know, my biggest concerns are related to finance and information technology. From a workload and complexity perspective, the rules and requirements are just getting more and more difficult. So you did, the only two new positions that are in the budget that are, are reflected in these numbers is a new position for accounting and a new position for IT. So this is the fund summary, and this is, this has been corrected on the presentation as well as we pass this revised sheet out to you. And so we did review this in detail during the last budget workshop. The only real modification that we can talk about when we get the Fund 10 that was made was we did reduce the watershed reserve by 50,000 and increased consulting services for Fund 10 by 50 in consideration of any grant assistance that we could possibly leverage. The Fund 10 Water Operations, we do have reserves, and then it includes the divisions of cashiering, customer service, engineering, water operations, maintenance, and vegetation. And we did include an OPEB payment this year. I know in, last year and this year, it was originally recommended to not include OPEB payment, but I think that it's more prudent to keep up on those payments than not.
How much was that payment? How much?
I'll have to look. Uh, no, I think it was 445. So it's in each division. So I think it was 445,000. And we're doing really good from an OPEB perspective. We're about 80% funded. However, I do have some concerns about the last valuation that was completed by the actuary. There were some strange nuances that weren't included, and it could have just been a matter of timing associated with COVID. And one of those, there was a couple of things that concerned me is that most agencies did see an increase in valuation associated with OPEB due to the fact that the California requirement to keep children on health insurance later, I was 25, I think, 26, just came into play about three years ago. And so most agencies, so what happens is you get somebody in their 55s, they could theoretically have a kid that is still, child that is still on their health insurance. So most agencies did see an increase in OPEB costs associated with that. We did not. And then also, my other concern is that the OPEB valuation was completed right at that transition time with COVID happening. And so we didn't really start seeing that market volatility at that time. So I would like to reserve the right to get updated sooner than later. And so this is the fund summary sheet, and just as a quick reminder, we're showing the beginning of fund balance. And so right, this is where Debbie and I go, always see us, say, estimated or forecasted because it is our, you know, our beginning fund balance is on January 1st, 2022. And so there are invoices that we may not be aware of and accruals that haven't been made. We do make our best estimate based off of, we do know what data we do have, so this, that will be adjusted. So we are proposing to fund the following reserves, operating reserve, and that is at that six-month mark, so it's six months or 50% of your annual expenditures. And just to note that the operating reserves for the main three operating funds, water, recreation, and hydro, do include reserve that covers the operating reserve that would be required for the cost allocation for the Fund 70. And so if you're looking and saying, well, that's not 50% of the expenditures, that's why. There's money kind of loaded into it to have reserve for those other, for the other divisions that are in that Fund 70. Operating reserves are typically for any unknown expenditures that you may have, but more so for cash flow purposes. One of our largest sources of revenues, we do only receive, we're on a teeter payment plan from the county for property taxes, and so that means we do get paid twice, twice per year with a potential third payment true-up. I don't know, do we ever have the third payment true-up?
It's driven down very small.
Yeah, so it's, it's a very small true-up, year to year. And so because when you have major cash coming in only twice a year, you do need cash on hand to bridge those gaps. We have the Water Rate Stabilization Reserve, and this is the reserve we talked about last time. I do think we need to take reconsideration of this reserve as to whether or not that we need it. So it is proposed to be funded at zero. We have the Community Investment Stabilization Reserve. We did hold this reserve at the 1.5 million this year. That is another reserve we should talk about when we move forward into the reserve policy discussion. Insurance Catastrophic Reserve, so this is intended to cover any insurance requirements or above our insurance allowed liability as well as for any catastrophic event. I also would like to propose that we revisit this reserve now that we are taking on the South Yuba Canal. Watershed Stewardship Reserve, you will see was decreased from, since we last met, from 500,000 to 450,000. And then the accrued leave reserve, the current policy regarding accrued leave is a little vague. It does say that you should have essentially a half year of your annual, or half of your annual liability reserved. However, it's a little bit, it's, it's a little bit duplicative in that your accrued liability on an annual basis is, impacts your fund balance because it's booked on your financials, so you're kind of double counting it. And so what I propose instead is we kind of went through and said, okay, how many people do we kind of think are going to retire? What could potential payouts be from that retirement? And so that's where we came up with the 250,000. So I also recommend we revisit that particular reserve.
It's duplicative with, you said?
And so every single fund, from a financial audit perspective on an annual basis, you do have to book any accrued absences as a liability on your fund balance, which then does reduce your available fund balance. So this is where our financials and our budget never really tie out. So this idea of having an accrued leave reserve, I don't know that you necessarily need it. However, if you don't want to amend your budget, you know, you do typically will add in an expense line item to pay for pay, payouts when somebody retires for any accumulate, cumulative leave that somebody has.
This, this, excuse me for interrupting, this is the balance of the budget by having that item?
No, it's kind of, it's all, it's still double counting it. So this is one of the differences between your audited financials and your real fund balance versus your budget. And when you have a liability, so say, for example, we, the district has a loan, and we have to make a loan payment every year. We are technically, if, if we didn't really care about transparency, we wouldn't book the loan payment as an expense. We would just show a reduced liability on your financials, which then increases your fund balance. When you have accrued absences on your financials, you book the financial liability of those accrued absences against your fund balance, which then reduces your available fund balance. When we show debt service, we either, you can do it a couple of ways. You can show it kind of as this expense, but when you're doing your audited financials, you technically only need to expense the interest payment of the loan obligation as opposed to the interest in the principal. The principal comes off of the liability, which impacts your fund balance. We show some of these things for transparency purposes, and then we, we fix it on the backend, so it make, so it's actually real accounting and our financials are normal. From an accrued at- leave balance, you don't really need a reserve for it. What you usually would do is you have your accrued leave, total accrued leave liability, which is a dollar amount, is booked to your financials, reduces your fund balance. Then we would have an expense line in your expenses if we wanted to, so we wouldn't have to come back and ask for a budget amendment if we have to pay out accrued leave. So this is where, this is where budget and finance is kind of split, right? We booked it as a reserve, which I don't know that you need to. It's kind of, we're just kind of tucking a note away to ourselves that we could have to pay this money. So a lot of times when leaves are paid out, we're able to absorb them into our annual operating budgets without requiring a budget amendment, but sometimes not. So when you have, say, you know, a 30-year employee with piles and piles of leave and five of them just retired, we have to make a huge payout to them. Well, more times than not, you can absorb that. If you can't absorb that and we don't budget for it as a line item, we would have to come ask for a budget amendment technically. At, this money being reserved isn't even a budget, it's not an appropriation. We're just kind of saying, we think we might pay this out. I'm still planning on trying to absorb any payouts in the budget. So this is really where our policy, budget practices and financials, the fundamentals are not aligning.
Did you have a question? I just wanted to try and clarify.
Maybe I'll answer my question.
So, so Debbie, bear with me. So, so when, when the leave is, is take, when the leave is expensed?
Correct.
Every month, you give leave, and then you put that, you have to expense that leave. Does that expense pay the operating reserve, and so that money is fitting in operating reserve?
No.
Where does that money go that you take out?
Regular leave, so say, for example, I take a vacation. I am, my, there's no vacation line item in the budget, it's just coming out of the salary line item. So say I leave tomorrow, and you have to pay me what I have vested in leave. So vacation is vested by law, you know, there's a variety of things. We have, if you're here so many years, I don't know what, you get half of your, 50% of your sick leave. When you come across those, so I'm a bad example because I've been here for very long. So Chip leaves us. Chip gets.
He's not allowed.
He's not allowed. So this isn't going to happen either. So somebody like Chip, who has a huge leave balance, if he were to leave, the financial impact could be well over 50, 60, 75,000 dollars. If we have more than one person who has a significantly high leave balances, our salary items where we automatically pay, the pay codes go to for paying those leave balances out, we would be showing we're over budget on salary. So then we would have to come back and amend the budget to increase the salary. A lot of times, we kind of have enough money in the operating budget to absorb, but there are times if you get, you know, four Chips that leave in one year, that could be something we didn't budget for. So then we would come back and budget for it. This is all very confusing because at the end of the day, we don't need this accrued leave balance.
But if that happens, if Chip was going fishing, he would have taken me with him.
If Chip, yeah, we can make that as part of his, getting any of his leave paid out.
I have to interview?
Yeah.
I have one more question. My, my observation, my question revolves around, so we're funding, I think the new operating reserve, funding that out of this year's budget, correct?
No, we are, we are, so we are taking it from the beginning of fund balance.
Taking it from the fund balance.
Yeah. So one.
We have this new fund of 22 million, but we probably won't have to use this year. The new, the new, the new, the new, this is the 22 million.
Correct.
Capital reserve.
Fund 15.
The, you know, the operating reserve. That's what I'm talking about, the operating reserve.
Yes.
Fund 15.
15, or capital.
Yes. Anyway. He's talking about Fund 15.
Right, right. Okay.
So on our summary.
We don't use that much. It's even less likely we use that 22 million belt for leave reserve, right? That will roll over.
Correct.
And then we will be, have a positive for next year, right? So if we don't, my point is, we're putting money in a savings account that probably we will never use.
Not necessarily.
Unless something happens, right?
Well.
Or we choose.
And so you, before, what was occurring before, and I think was causing some of the confusion, was that you were, the district had a tradition of saying, the entire unused or unbudgeted or unappropriated fund balance was reserves.
Mm-hmm.
That's not really how it works. So you have, if you have money reserved by policy in order to utilize that money, we should be coming to the board and making a finding that we are using that money consistent with the policy. And if not, why? And you can do that, it's, this is your policy. You can say, this isn't in compliance with the policy, however, we've decided we're going to use $10 million to this reserve, it's to the best benefit of our ratepayers and customers because of these findings. When we have this money reserved here, we don't touch it, but you're not going to be refunding it year to year, it's already funded once, right? And so it's kind of, it's in the fund balance, but it kind of has a box around it, it's protected.
It stays in the fund.
Correct. Yep.
And you can, then, like Laura said, if we have, or somebody said, if we have a capital project that comes along.
You could, so, but it depends on what operating reserve. So if you came to me and said, Jennifer, we'd like to use the operating reserve to build a brand-new water treatment plant. I'm going to say, I don't recommend you do that because the purpose of the operating reserve is for cash flow purposes, so we can pay bills on a monthly basis, pay payroll, all those things. And for anything that might kind of really surprise us, that all of a sudden, who knows what, aliens come down, no one pays their water bill, right? So we would then, we could use the operating reserve. I wouldn't ever recommend you really tap into your operating reserve, that is your cushion and that is your cash flow. Now, if it was for your.
Don't mind me, you're not supposed to. Keep going. I don't want to.
Oh, am I? Now, for the capital reserves, we do need to flush those out a little bit more. Typically, you have a capital reserve, and it doesn't really matter in this manner because of how we're funding the capital programs. We're doing pay-go, and we're paying, we're booking the revenue to the parent fund, moving the revenue to the capital fund to pay for the annual capital expenditures. When you have a capital fund that has a direct source of revenue, but it's coming in on a monthly basis. but it's coming in on a monthly basis, you typically have part of your capital reserve is usually set aside for cash flow for construction projects because construction projects usually happen between, you know, May and October of every year, when your cash is coming in different months. So it helps you make sure you can pay your bills. Our capital reserves are set up to save money for projects. And so once we start moving forward, we'll start flushing that out more. So remember when we were talking about with rates and fees, are you, you want to really be diligent about setting rates and fees every five years? Otherwise, you have these big swings in rates, high, or you have too much money. What you should be doing is kind of take it going, okay, we have $22 million in our capital reserve. We have a beginning fund balance of whatever, $5 million. So we're going to look at our rates and we need a rate increase over five years. Well, we're going to absorb 2% of that rate increase by buying down our overage on our reserves or buying down a piece of our reserve. And we're also going to buy down that rate increase for capital because we have, we are showing $40 million capital expenditures over five years, but we're going to fund 20 million of it with our reserves. So we're then also going to buy our rate increase down. So it'll, I think it'll make more sense when we get into rate setting. You'll start seeing how all this money flows more and how we should be thinking of it so that you're accurately setting your rates, you're informing them with all of your money. Because you don't, you know, there's no reason from a capital perspective for us to have $22 million sitting there that we're never going to use. There should be a plan for it.
The capital life reserve should be it.
Not the capital reserve. The only reserve.
No, operating reserve.
The operating reserve, you should have your operating reserve essentially sitting there. What you might see my recommendation be, and I just haven't really gone through it yet, is what we will do over this next year is do a cash flow analysis. And that will help us determine whether or not our cap, our operating reserves are set too high and if they can be set at three months, 90 days as opposed to 180 days. It just, you have to align your monthly cash flow outputs with your debt, large debt service payments with how your revenue comes in. So we'll do a full analysis and I might come back and say, you know, we don't need six months. I'm comfortable with three months for an operating perspective and then we'll move forward. What I, my gut will tell me is I'll probably come back and say, let's lower the operating reserve, increase the catastrophic reserve.
So this all segues to talking about having a workshop about reserves.
Absolutely. I need to do a little bit of homework on cash flow analysis, but absolutely. I would like to propose modifications to the reserve policy.
You're learning this one already, so another year doesn't matter.
As long as we have the money there, which Jennifer is clear.
Yeah, we have the, we're, we're good from a cash flow perspective. We have adequate cash in the bank.
I've been using that argument out in the community. They just, they, they were arguing that NID is, is.
Insolvent.
Insolvent, yeah, I said, no.
Not even close.
Paying our bills, from my seat of the past business, if I can pay my, at the end of the year, my bills are all paid and I still have some money in the bank.
My, yeah, my concern from a long-term perspective for the district is definitely related to somewhat of the volatility of the power market, while also to our aging infrastructure. We have a lot of infrastructure that is either very, 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 very old and a high-risk environment from a natural disaster perspective. And then we have a lot of treatment plants that were built at the same time. So that's more of my concern. That's the other reason why I'm kind of keeping a tight reins on the money. So it allows time to plan this out.
Good, all right.
When you, when you bring forth the reserve discussion, could you also touch on strategies for pay-as-you-go versus issuing debt? Because the district really, I think, has a practice of issuing debt instead of pay-as-you-go, at least to some degree. And I, I think that, I think there's different, there's probably pros and cons of each. But I do think it's a policy decision as to whether we are heading more toward pay-as-you-go versus issuing debt. And I think we should talk about that relative to the reserves as well. How much we save in reserves influences that pay-as-you-go ability.
Right. So what you typically see is that most people only bond for infrastructure improvements that are quite costly. So, you know, you're up over, or you just don't have enough money. So if you have a $25 million need and you only have $10 million in the bank, that's a reasonable time to bond for it. Most agencies do pay as you go for those $5 million and below. What you, the thing that will make the decision is how, when you start setting your rates, looking at your fund balance and taking projections out on revenue and expenditures. Because with, if you can do pay as you go, you know, there, some people say, well, you can make more on the market. Well, maybe, our returns for the past couple of years have been extremely low. And so from that perspective, our returns have been lower than you can bond for. Uh, you know, it's, it, it is kind of a one-off thing. I am not a huge believer in bundling piles and piles of little projects and bonding for them. I think that that's more reasonable to pay as you go because it essentially catch up with you, right? Because those, you know, the smaller projects, kind of the $5 million and under, those don't go away. You're always going to have those every single year. And so if you're bonding for them, you're then adding debt obligation, debt obligation, debt obligation. And then your debt service and impacts your ratepayers just starts getting layered. I prefer to pay as you go for those kind of smaller amount projects and then consider bonding for what we can't afford. Because what bonding is beneficial for is you're, you're spreading out over a larger period of time the payback requirement. Most bonds are 30-year period. Anything more than that has very diminishing value if you couldn't even get it these days. So we can have the conversation more in depth and we can bring somebody in too to talk about it. But when you really start writing the math, if you're going to bond every year for $5 million, $5 million, $5 million, or even bundle up $20 million, $5 million, $5 million, it doesn't make much financial sense. If you're going to bond for a large project, that makes more sense.
Plus the useful life of those smaller projects by the time.
Right. There's that too.
Barely paying it off by the time you got to redo it again because they're just.
And a lot, yeah. And a lot of people forget about that, right? You don't want to be paying debt service on something that is already completely depreciated. If you get into that position, then you're still paying for something that's already defunct and now you're having to figure out how to pay for it again when you have to replace it. At the same time. Yep.
Like those lenders who like to put your car payment in your mortgage.
Yeah.
Okay.
It's a trick.
It's a trick.
So I'm, I'm a big proponent of pay-as-you-go, but let's also remember that inflation is a heavy-duty tax. And when we have to pay for that on increased parts, increased maintenance, increased everything, that is going to hit our ratepayers big time. So having lived in a country with inflation, it is amazing to watch how expensive and how fast it comes and it gets. Uh, so, yeah, I love pay-as-you-go. I also know that dollars today are cheaper than, or can buy more than the dollar one year from now or five years from now. So there's a, the real heavy-duty argument that doing it today and paying off with cheap dollars in the future is a very prudent move. So we have to balance that also with the fact that our ratepayers probably aren't participating in any increased, you know, income increases or that type of thing. So it's going to be harder, you know, on them either way. So we got to, it's going to be a tight rope we're going to walk because inflation is a big-time tax.
Yeah, inflation's challenging, especially in today's economic world and that, you know, it changes rapidly and it's hard to project out over 30 years. But I do agree, we're already experiencing inflation.
Well, I think, yeah, and, and to some, the dollar's worth about, today's dollar's worth about 2% of what it was 100 years ago. So it's continuing inflation. It doesn't buy as much.
All right. So for our, water operations, from my perspective, we're doing really well. You know, we are not taking, we're not having a huge subsidy coming in from Hydro. I think the biggest difference is pulling out those overhead expenditures and allocating them. So we're, we're doing just fine for water operations perspective. But do be mindful, we're doing just fine, but we are keeping our capital program very low.
Can I just put an exclamation point on here?
Yes.
I mean, Hydro has been underwriting water on the books. An enormous amount, let's just say it that way. And to see water with a positive net margin, given a lower capital program, but, I mean, for the first time, we're seeing Hydro standing on its own legs, water standing on its own legs, and, and Rec standing on it. And I, I just put, I put on my, my sheet, three exclamation points, woo-hoo! I mean, this is huge that we're seeing these operations, how they're doing. And it's super encouraging to see that water is doing so well. Um, and that we're not really needing this gigantic subsidy from Hydro. This budget model, so.
I think one of the biggest contributing factors is pulling out the overhead. So, you know, your overhead functions are, um, some more of those professional classifications that are just inherently more expensive, right? Accountants and managers and IT professionals, you know, they're more, they're, the labor costs are higher. And so I do think that that is definitely part of it. We have a really tight, very tight capital program, so that is part of it. But, you know, I was pleasantly surprised as well. But, and also the most positions came out of Fund 10. And so, you know, we're going to have to kind of watch it and see how we're doing. But I think that water's doing much better than I thought. So the water, capital program, Fund 15, we talked about this. Um, we did remove the programmatic kind of programs from the capital budget. We're funding actual projects. Um, Hemp Hill has shown as fully funded. We did apply for a grant, so if we do get grants for that, we'll be bringing back an item to kind of request booking of the revenue with expenditures all included. Reserves are funded as we noted. Um, and then this one is a little bit weird because it's a new fund, but the fund balance is zero and that's because it's a brand-new fund. So per policy, this is that $22 million reserve. We funded it by doing a transfer from Fund 10 into this new Fund 15. I do, I do recommend we fully fund that reserve until we kind of get a handle on our long-term projections and outlooks. So the Fund 15 summary is fairly straightforward. It has no dedicated source of revenue and does rely on transfers in from Fund 10 for all of its funding. Fund, we talked about these last time, Funds 21 and 22 or Cement Hill. You'll see that very little inflows. Um, the inflows are used into assessments or received from the assessments placed on the parcels that were located within the original assessment district. Those are billed to the property owners on an annual basis and then we get those payments. And the sole purpose of those funds coming in and the outflows is to pay back the debt obligation.
Two questions, one going back to Laura. Um, I'm just curious, do we have a number for if, I don't know how to frame this exactly, but, uh, in a different, um, context, would, what would the capital of, for water have been this year? So in other words, really, if Chip was doing a, his analysis of these are the projects we should do in 2022, what would that number have been versus what is it?
And so it's a little bit difficult year-over-year comparison because last year it was also inherently kept low.
Right.
So this year, we kind of kept the total at the same amount, which was this, what, $6 million, um, 6.8 million.
Right.
But $4 billion of that goes to Hemp Hill. So the capital program traditionally would have at least $4 or $5 million additional dollars in it for just regular capital improvements.
Okay.
And so you can definitely see that, um, in the Fund 10 fund balance. So we're carrying over that $9 million in unassigned fund balance, but that was in consideration of our capital program being light. Also, not quite sure what we're doing with South Ubiquit Canal. So Fund 12 capacity fees, these are set by fee study. This fee study needs to be recompleted. It's intended to build infrastructure that brings additional capacity to the system. And so this year, the only expenditures that you're seeing is $103,000 and that's what we anticipate spending on the consultant services and legal services for the updated fee study. Fund 30 and 35 Recreation, as we talked about last time, this is the only fund that I'm primarily concerned about for this year. Uh, it is running a deficit. It does not include the funds or expenditures or revenue associated with running those U.S. Forest Service campgrounds. The reserves are not fully funded. It is relying on fairly heavy subsidies from Hydro. But from that perspective, it is a business function of Hydro. We, it is required for our Hydro system per our FERC licenses. And so, you know, is it inappropriate for Hydro to be subsidizing recreation? No. Um, but the other thing that is contributing to having a better financial picture or understanding of where Recreation is at is that this is the first year that they are paying for their overhead costs as well as their direct proportional allocation of engineering services that they receive. So with the direct allocation of engineering services, they're all booked to Fund 10. However, they will be directly apportioned to the funds based off of an estimate of workload, but they will be reconciled throughout the year. So those will be based off of actual numbers.
I should say a couple of things. One is I appreciate you highlighting the point that Recreation is a regulatory obligation. And I think, I know we all have said.
That's a good point.
Yeah, that, um, Monica, I saw her on the call earlier, but, you know, she and her team do a great job managing that area and I know that that's a, a common feeling among board members. Um, the other question I have is, um, where does the operating deficit for Recreation get carried in the budget? So does it, um, does it, is it just carried to the bottom line? So all fund balances roll to a final conclusion? Or does Hydro's budget reflect the operating deficit in?
It's both. So it's reflected in the subsidy from Hydro. It's from one of the transfer ends. So for the operational perspective, I am proposing that we transfer in $167,000 from Hydro as a pure operational subsidy. But then what you'll further see is I'm only, and it's hard to see on that screen, apologize, you have to look at your pocket. I'm only recommending that we fund the operational reserve at three months as opposed to six months of operational expenditures. I really lowered the accrued absences, what we've talked about. It's not horribly big deal. Um, but also if you look over to the fund balance, you'll see that the projected year-end unassigned fund balance is five, a negative $567,000. So that doesn't take into account reserves. So what this is showing you is that when you go to the projected fiscal year balance with reserves, we have $42,000 left. So that means going into the next fiscal year, we don't have reserves funded and, you know, we're likely going to be running an additional deficit again. Now, I could have made the subsidy from Hydro larger. Um, I didn't. From a couple of perspectives, I want to get a better handle on the long-term outlook of Hydro. Um, I also want to go through on a more granular basis of the Recreation finances. So the deficit isn't housed as a specific line item. It is reflected in the year-end fund balance.
Okay. And where does the, the starting balance of nine, almost a million dollars come from? Because I understand that they currently operate deficit.
Yeah, they do, but what you're seeing this year, which you've never seen in previous years, is the funding paying for actual overhead expenditures. Recreation has never paid for any overhead expenditures. Um, so that is arbitrarily inflating their beginning year balance. Um, you've also never seen them pay for their fair share of any engineering costs that they utilize, so that's also reflected. So if you didn't have those two things hitting against the fund balance, you know, you would be, you would have a lower beginning balance. Does that make sense?
Well, it does, but I thought, that we haven't seen kind of year-to-date financials for a while. So I, I, you know, I would, I'm probably out of touch with this. But the million dollars in carries forward between 2021 year-end into 2022 seems quite high at a million dollars for Recreation when they're, they're giving their expenses and revenue absent the, uh, fact that they do not pay for overhead in the current year budget.
Yeah, they always have a little bit of rollover. I think one of the things you're also seeing is, um, you know, I think I might be, have been harping on staff a lot. You know, I'm concerned about money, concerned about money, I'm concerned about money. So I think just in general, we've been kind of starting to pull our expenditures in anyways. Um, there were a couple of positions we didn't fill in anticipation of not needing them. Um, they also don't have as many expenditures as they thought. So you probably budgeted your expenditures a little high last year. You know, some of the facilities, we weren't able, so there's large expenditures with stocking the stores and doing some types, those types of things that we just simply didn't do because we couldn't open. that we just simply didn't do because we couldn't open the stores this year. So it's a combination of a lot of things. I think by and large, the biggest thing is that they've never inherently paid for their overhead expenditures. So if you take that out, they do okay. But if you put that in, that's where you start to see the real issues.
Sure.
But Monica does a wonderful job. And, you know, and I know I touched on this before. You know, it should be noted that it's fairly common for public recreational facilities to be subsidized in one way, shape, or form. The market tolerance for price increases or adjustments to rates is much, much lower. So it is kind of one of those things. But, you know, this is a policy consideration. You know, if I had it my way, we'd be charging exactly what we needed to recover, enough revenue to pay for our costs. But, you know, is that realistic in the Recreation world? Probably not.
Just do it your way.
Now, we have beautiful facilities.
We do have wonderfully beautiful facilities.
If both the lake goes below 400 feet at 5 miles an hour, they're going to be up here.
They do. And we also have a couple of things, I think, that maybe we need to talk about. You know, we have some season passes. We just have some things we can look at a little bit deeper. And so Monica has been taking a deeper dive. We've also been taking a look at our actual staffing needs, what type of staffing do we need, where do we need them? We're kind of doing a wholesale look at Recreation. So we'll flush this out a little bit more.
Thank you.
So then we also see, there was another subsidy from Hydro into Recreation Capital. So I fully funded the recreational capital reserve as well as fully funded the pay-go $150,000 for annual capital expenditures from a Hydro subsidy. So that will, we'll also talk about that reserve when we get there. So Fund 50 Hydro Electric Operations, as we said, we added Fund 55. I do have an OPEB payment included. One thing just to note, if you're trying to kind of tie out our OPEB payments to our last actuary study, it's very difficult to tie them out because the actuary study divided the total obligation for OPEB and any annual payment by fund. But it included, that meant all of the overhead costs were in Fund 10, those employees were. And so I kind of pulled it apart a little bit and distributed. So you can't exactly tie it out because I pulled more of it out instead of all being in Water. It does include the Recreation subsidy, which is shown as transferred out, and then we fully funded the reserves. So Fund 50 has very similar reserves to the Water Fund. Operation reserves is six months of operating expenses. We have the insurance and catastrophic reserve. As we noted earlier, it's funded at that $5 million in total mark, split 50/50 between Water and Hydro. The accrued leave reserve of 50% of annual liability, I did not fully fund that for the reasons we talked about earlier. I did fully fund the full capital reserve at $15 million, and then the FERC capital reserve at 35. And so although those reserves for Hydro do seem extremely high, I do recommend we keep them high till we get a longer, bigger, better handle of the long-term outlook.
Jennifer, I have a question with regard, this kind of covers all the funds. But when we were talking about the insurance and catastrophic reserves at a minimum of $5 million, maximum $10 million, did I, I understood you to say that we're at the $5 million?
Correct.
Okay. So that $5 million is actually cash sitting someplace?
Correct. Well, it's invested on the market.
Invested. I mean, it's, it lifts.
We keep it in case.
It's like real water versus paper water.
Yes.
Real money versus paper money.
Yeah, no, this, these are definitely, these are not kind of, so.
Okay, that's all.
Debt liabilities, accrued leaves, depreciation, asset value. Those are kind of those above-the-belt non-cash items.
Above the line, yeah.
Yeah, and then you have your real cash. This is actual money. This is cash that we have in the bank. We have, no more, I heard we had gold a lot of time here, but I don't think we have any gold bars left.
Then, just if, if it's okay, we want to quick follow-up. So when we go over our reserve policy, it seems like the catastrophic reserve, I'm in agreement with you, that should be bigger than $5 million.
Yeah.
In fact, it probably should be bigger than $10 million, given South Uba. But, so that, we will be reviewing and revisiting that as well.
Yes, definitely. And I, this year, my natural inclination, because of our, the age of our system and some of the inherent risks with the remote locations, it's that fire risk, avalanche risk.
Fire risk.
It's huge. I would have recommended that we increase the reserve this year. But I'm extremely comfortable with the amount of money we have hold away in other reserves. And so, you know, if, if things get really bad, right, we're gonna, we're gonna have to do what we have to do. But I do think we should take a look at that catastrophic reserve and start planning long-term. So you do see, there is a number of transfers out for Fund 50, and that is partially due to funding Fund 55 capital. So it includes the, what is it, 6.8 in capital, was it 6.8? Am I making that up? No, 4.6 in capital projects for the year. Includes a movement of $50 million into Fund 55, and that's for the FERC and the capital reserve. And then it also includes a subsidy to Recreation for Recreation Capital, the Recreation Capital Reserve, and then the operational subsidy of $167,000. That includes the cost, fair share of the cost allocation is distributed based off of the formula. And then lastly, includes direct allocation to Engineering, which is housed in Fund 10.
You have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
So Fund 55 Hydro Reserve, and that you said was specifically for our FERC reserve.
So there's 55 million, so with FERC, there is, I think it's 35 million.
Because I was gonna say, it was 35 million. And now you're saying, your reserve is 50.
There's two reserves. There's a capital, a general capital reserve, and then there is a, see, this is, who was the one who mentioned, I printed this too small. There's a general capital reserve, oh, I go to the next page. This is slow though.
Oh, I see.
Yeah.
So it is, so 50 million is inclusive of the 35 for FERC?
Correct. So there's 15 million for general capital, and then there's 35 million for FERC, which is related to the relicensing effort.
Got it, okay. That's what I was trying to say, thank you.
So those are.
Sorry.
It's probably hard to see, too.
On the, the Recreation subsidy, the Fund 30 Recreation subsidy, $167,000, you know, we pulled out the Engineering amount, but it's my understanding that Water Operations and Water Maintenance also was there. Is that, is that included? Will that, is that what this Recreation subsidy will help pay for?
Yeah, so this particular year, we are still doing some calculations on the cost of the water contribution to the Recreation Department. If it is material, we'll come back and we will address it. We just didn't quite get that all flushed out because one of the other things we're trying to do is we're also separating our water contributions to Recreation in general, but then also trying to separate out what the, what the cost of that is for the U.S. Forest Service properties. It is likely that because we are not agreeing to enter into another concessionaire agreement to operate the U.S. Forest Service for the campgrounds, that we are going to be required to make some type of contribution to that program for them. They have their rates set inherently very, very, very low. And so those rates on, from a U.S. Forest Service perspective, are heavily subsidized. And so we are going through the exercise of calculating what the cost is to operate the water system at the U.S. Forest Service campgrounds, and then splitting that out in the rest of them. So just stay tuned, it still isn't covered in the budget.
Do you need to operate the Forest Service water?
We may. So there may be a need to provide some additional support to the U.S. Forest Service.
It's still being negotiated.
It is totally still negotiation. So from that perspective, I didn't go through and make a lot of assumptions. It's not overly material to the Water Fund, so it's not, it's not going to move our needle that much. If it does become more significant, we will come back and adjust that. U.S. Forest Service. Yeah. Well, they own a portion of them, so we own a portion, and then, yeah, they own a portion.
This was the one where we had liability for fire.
Uh, yeah. Well, they, they do, right, it's on their property, right. But we will, this will get sorted out over the next couple of months.
Yeah, okay.
Good questions. So Fund 55, as you can see, started with a zero balance, technically ends with a zero unassigned fund balance, but it's, your end fund balance should be equal to its reserves. Now, that's in a perfect world, right? Usually, we don't exactly finish all our projects. We have carryover, or we'll just finish our projects and it'll be less expensive than we thought. So you could have your end fund balance when we're done with the next fiscal year, depending on how it goes. So Fund 70 is the new fund. That is the cost allocation, or it's really referred to as internal services. These are all the overhead expenditures. This is the board, managers, IT, finance, shop. It should technically zero out every year. So money is, it's, as we cost allocate money in to pay for the expenses, there really shouldn't be a whole lot of leftover money in this fund. Technically, internal services funds should zero out. So if you were to, and it just depends on how frequent you are making your accruals over to the cost allocation. You know, if you're doing it on a monthly basis, you typically have a good handle. If you're making one big transfer at the end of the year, you know you could end up with some leftover money. It does include those new positions, IT Network Administration Administrator and the accountant, too. And then, like I said, no reserves are needed because those are all covered in the operating reserves for the three main funds. So we talked about this. Internal Services includes the following divisions: Directors, Management, Watershed, HR, IT, Safety, Communications, Accounting, Purchasing, and Shop Operations. So we did a very straightforward, high-level allocation. I do recommend we do a full allocation, which is also helpful to do to set your fully loaded rates. But, you know, I'm going to guess we're not totally off on our kind of guest estimate. So it usually, you know, we did a calculation that was based off of revenues as well as full-time equivalent, and we combined, blended the two together. So the splits is Fund 10, 54%, Fund 35%, and Fund 50, 31%. It's a blended formula, revenue, full-time equivalents. And like I said, I do recommend a completion of a full study. You can get very, very granular on those studies. So that's just a lot of workload for what staff we have. But I think this is a really good starter. So there's no reserve account. I don't feel it's necessary at this time. Has beginning fund balance is zero because it's a new fund, and it has no specific source of revenue. It's all transfers in from the other funds. So the expenditure is about $12.2 million. Projected year-end fund balance, like I talked about, is, should be around zero. So typically, what you do if you have transferred all that money over and we have expended all of it, you usually would transfer it back to its parent fund and then start over again. Otherwise, it gets a little messy in future years. Well, future, yeah, I've seen cities that don't, don't kind of put the money back in the parent fund at the end of the year. It gets real convoluted in 10 years, yeah.
So historically, I'm really happy to see that.
Okay.
But historically, it was always just this $12.5 million just came out of Water, and it was assumed to be a Water expense, is that correct? Is there ever, did we ever estimate how much it cost to?
I don't, we've never had a cost allocation, have we? No. So, yeah, it is very strange, from a policy perspective, the overhead expenditures were always housed in the Water Fund. And that's not the really strange part. The strange part was is that the policy, there is a policy that essentially states that in consideration of Water paying for these overhead expenditures, Water should receive all of the investment revenue from all the pooled cash invested. Well, this is completely apples and carrots or something, right? It's like, it doesn't, they don't, they don't equate to each other. So we pulled it all apart.
And so, $12 million, $12 million overhead on a, what do we say, $86 million? $76 million, is that?
Yeah, it's not, it's, yeah, it's not bad. You definitely want to see 10% or less, and we're, we're right about there, yeah. Anyway, anything below 20 is fine. One of the things, you know, we noted earlier is that does tend to be your more expensive staff or concentration of expensive staff. And then you have a lot of the larger kind of things that we need consultants for outreach or whatever is included in there. So it, it's not abnormal. So my final recommendations, you know, we'd like to do some focusing on OPEB and unfunded liability this coming year. And we do need to do the full cost allocation study. We, I would like to kind of do some long-term projections on the capital programs and reserve policies and reserve needs and cash flow. We're definitely working on Recreation Operations. Monica's already in the middle of pulling it all apart and taking a deep dive on it. And then lastly, we will be coming back with evaluations of South Uba Canal. But Sherry Means, that will certainly need an amendment.
Well, the CIP, this five-year CIP, is that, is that what comes after the Plan for Water?
Yes. We kind of, you know, we kind of have these projects, and then we'll take the Plan for Water, then we'll dive into the master plans, and then we'll come out with a real master plan, longer-term capital outlook, and then we'll start setting normal five-year CIPs. So this is a work in progress. You know, we're going to get better, more flushed out every year. You know, you always want to, there's, your master plans, your capital programs and your rate studies, capital program and your budget, and then your daily kind of what falls apart. They don't always align, but it's all intended to inform, right? And so then what we will do is, the one thing I did want to kind of point out is, so the other thing that's a little different this year, we do have the capital sheets and the budget. The, a lot of this information will be put into our normal formal budget documents with kind of the more fluffy things that aren't overly important as far as appropriation. But one of the things you also see is that the resolutions that I've proposed for adoption of the budget is different this year. And there's some reasons why. You know, I want to make it a little bit more clear about what the board is appropriating and not. And one of the things that a resolution does is it does provide kind of the, you know, the goalposts for the budget. And so per policy right now for budgets and amendments, the policy allows for the general manager to make budget amendments up to $650,000 a year. But what that actually means is that I could appropriate, without the board having any input or approval, $650,000 worth of additional money into the budget.
Right.
I am inherently very, very uncomfortable with that. Not that it occurred here, and I'm not even remotely saying it dead.
It's not prudent.
It's not prudent, and that is when fraud happens. Not that fraud has ever occurred here, there is absolutely no sense of that. I just think it's good for the district to have kind of those checks and balances. So what you do see is that I kind of changed it so the general manager authorization, so the general manager cannot appropriate any additional funds, but the general manager, so a lot of times what you'll see is we'll, you know, we budget $400 for dental and $300 for vision. Well, and the bills, we got it backwards, or the bill comes in higher. So I need to move $20 for vision to dental. I have the authority per resolution to move money if it's already appropriated within the fund. Cannot move money between funds.
Right.
Just within the fund. And so I think that will give a little bit more control to the board.
And if it's over a certain amount, you let us know.
Yeah, so for the most part, you know, we, we talk, we're talking, a lot of times what you'll see, when you see the biggest ones, is like, okay, I have salaries of $400,000 for accounting. I have an MC Finance Director position. I'm going to rely on consultant services to help me through this hard time. So I'm going to move $50,000 from consult, from salaries to consultant services to offset. Those are the types of things you'll see. What I won't be able to do is say, I'm going to, the total budget for Water is, you know, $14 million, and I'm going to, I'm going to raise it without you guys knowing it, to 14.6.
Right. But you have to take it from another fund, right?
No. What, no, I, I am not able to take money from another fund.
Okay, you're going to raise it to 14.6, you would have to.
Oh, I can't do that anymore.
Right, okay, but you would have to reduce another fund to raise Water. It would be a bigger fund.
No, she could do it.
No, no.
No, I have to come, yes.
We had this body, you and Chris and I and the prior board, we did a few rounds around this and never were able to get to where we needed to be. And so as the person who kind of led that charge and got shot down over and over, I am so grateful that you saw this as some of us saw it and are taking care of it. So thank you.
Yeah, you know, and I always say, sometimes tightening down the rules, it's, it's more prudent, uh, public policy, but it also provides protection for staff, right? I don't, I don't want anybody accusing me of moving six, you know, increasing the vehicle budget by $650,000.
Right.
And then I come in a new Porsche.
Well, no, just a new pickup.
New, yeah, well, I'll come in my Ford 950. But I can't see where the steering wheel.
Good, good move.
Yeah, I think so. You know, the flexibility to move within a fund between items, that is traditional. That's what most agencies have. The ability to increase appropriations is not normal. And so I, I'm not, I'm uncomfortable with having the authority, so I'd like it removed.
Thank you. Hallelujah.
So that's all we had. If any more questions?
I just would like to say, hats off, kudos, hello. I just would like to say hats off, kudos, hello. I mean, to you and the whole team. Debbie, you put in a lot of effort, obviously, on this. I'm sure you did, Greg and all the management team. I have worked on some difficult, gnarly budget issues before, and when things, you have to unravel them, it takes a lot, and you did this all in less than seven months. And along with conceptualizing the Plan for Water and developing a new CIP model. So if we don't have the basics with financials, then we can't do anything. So you have put us on a great track, and I just thank you so much and to everybody.
Always a huge, huge support from staff. Doug and his team took the lead on the capital projects. Kiana and his team put a lot of effort into it, and everybody informed the budget. And they were all very patient with me as I was changing the process. Debbie, what is this?
This is the foundation.
Yeah.
From what we built.
Yeah, it's wonderful.
So there's no more questions? We respectfully request consideration of approval of the budget.
Is there a question or a public comment?
Oh, yeah, sorry.
Has any member of the public like to comment on the budget as presented today? Start on your phone. Like to comment today on 2022 budget? Start on your phone. Okay. Seeing none, if there's no further comment, discussion for the board, unless there's a motion to adopt the resolution.
I can speak, I will say. I move to adopt the 2022 annual budget, Resolution Number 2021-47, as recommended by staff.
Second.
Move to the seconded. Madam Secretary, call the roll, please.
Yes, and can I clarify that that resolution is adopting the 2022 budget and capital investment plan?
Yes.
Division 5?
Yes.
Division 1?
Yes, but I do have a question. I don't know if this procedure is correct. I'm surprised, but you know, in your staff report and in our thing here, you've got really terrific recommendations, which I would like to see. I know we can't include this in the resolution, but how do we get those from a form and substance, you know, how do we get these, like you recommend, you know, to do a cost allocation and the capital thing, and go to the reserves, and, you know, all of which you've said you're going to do, we want you to do. How do we formalize that at this point?
I think that it would be prudent to give staff direction, to have a focused workshop on future budget actions, because I'd also like to modify the budget policy in general. So I think we could flesh it out at that.
Okay, fine. Well, I do, I am voting yes on the budget and the resolution. Thank you very much. I just didn't know if we needed to include your recommendations in the vote or not.
I wouldn't include them in the vote because they're not.
They're not part of the resolution.
Right, right, no.
So yes, thank you. Thanks for indulging my questions.
Division 3?
Aye.
Division 4?
Aye.
Division 2?
Aye. Thank you, Jennifer.
You're welcome. Thank you very much.
Hard work. All of us.
I do, I can take it.
Okay, we are back in session for a short break. Next item is reorganization. I can't talk either since we're in the coverage of the board and appointment of Secretaries. So we'll start with nominations for president. Who would like to do that today?
I don't mind.
You don't mind? Okay. Director Johnson.
But, so I can't get my picture up because it's hidden behind.
I don't have it. Can I give you a prompt? Can work.
So I've gone around and around on this because I think anybody here is capable of being president and conducting our meetings. What it really got down to is, for me, is continuity. We've started the Plan for Water, and I think, Chris, you've just, you've done an outstanding job as being president. So I'd like to nominate you for another year. I just want that continuity going forward for another year and, because it's, we've got a lot of new things going on, but let's keep the continuity going. And I really honor the fact that you let everybody have their say, their speak, their input. It's going to be more important than ever going forward. So my nomination.
Who else wants to make a motion for president? For a second. Oh, go ahead.
I, too, have thought a lot about it, and.
Director Hope, can you turn your microphone on? Thank you.
Thank you, Mom. I, too, have thought a lot about it, and I do think that this, we've been through a pretty challenging period, really before I was on the board and Rich, and this last year. Though I think we have a lot of successes, I do think there's a value in continuing with Chris, because I think that you have done a great job, Chris. And so I would, I would second that nomination.
Procedurally, I don't even know what to do.
I would recommend that you ask your colleagues if they have any additional input. You know, there's always.
Usually you ask for any other nominations, and if they're, there's a kind of a formality as far as.
Correct.
Anybody else want to say?
Well, I'll add my thoughts in here, and I, too, have, you know, really had a lot of thought about this. And again, you know, I hear what you're saying, Rich, and I hear what you're saying, Karen. And one thing that I appreciate about Chris and his presidency is his even-handedness and that he lets all of us speak first, which I really appreciate. And so, yes, I would, and I also think Chris has done an extraordinarily good job, and it has been great working with you in that capacity. So, yeah, I would support that motion.
Okay, thank you. Well, I'm flattered and honored to do that. I'm willing to do that if my call holds up. That'll be the defining thing.
Uh-huh.
But be honored to do that, so. Madam Secretary, will you call the roll?
Yes. Division 5?
Yes.
Division 1?
Yes.
Division 3?
Aye.
Division 4?
Aye.
Division 2?
Aye.
Mr. Chair, you, Mr. Chair, I love to correct you. You forgot public comment on that item.
I was going to ask you that one. I'm only going to forget, Dustin. Darn, I thought that one wouldn't need it, right? Okay. Well, then we'll go, we'll go backwards. Is there any public comment on the election of president to the board? Start on your phone. You know, you don't get to nominate somebody you get to call. Am I correct on that one?
Correct.
Okay, seeing none, we'll go on to elect a vice president. Do you have a nomination for vice president?
Well, I would nominate Karen Hope. And one of the things I have come to appreciate so much about Karen, as she has found her voice and grown into this position.
There is.
I find myself so appreciative of your insights and your questions, and being able to serve with you on the Labor Committee was just an eye-opener for me. And you are intelligent and thoughtful and even-handed and fair. And for those reasons, I would nominate Karen.
I'll second that.
For the nomination. Okay, is there a public comment on our selection for vice president today? Start on your phone. Seeing none, Madam Secretary, will you call the roll, please?
Division 5?
Yes.
Division 1?
Yes.
Aye. Division 4?
Aye.
Division 2?
Aye. Thank you very much. Okay, and next on the list is.
Do we have to choose?
We did, we did on this one.
Yeah, sorry, yeah, yeah, okay.
See, your vice president is already ingrained in public comment.
All these things we only do once a year, remember the format. Okay, next week, Chris DePanyen continues our secretary. How many years has it been, Chris?
I just celebrated my fifth year.
Fifth year, okay.
Congratulations.
Do I have a motion?
I'll move to appoint Chris DePanyen as our Board Secretary for next year, 2022.
Second.
Move to the seconded. Is there any public comment on appointing Chris DePanyen as our Board Secretary?
Mr. President, if I, if I may just briefly, this is a Water Code requirement. You're also required to appoint the position of treasurer, but you're, in your consent item last week, you appointed the general manager as the interim treasurer, so you do not need to appoint that office as well. But I just wanted the record to reflect that that appointment had already been made.
Okay, very good, good point. Thank you, Dustin. Anybody, any member of the public like to comment at this point? Okay, Madam Secretary, will you call the roll, please?
Division 5?
Yes.
Division 1?
Yes.
Division 3?
Aye.
Division 4?
Aye.
Division 2?
Aye. Thank you. Okay.
President Peter Wagon, this is, so we are going to have to recess as the NID board, and then you need to reconvene as the JPA. It is a formality that we need to do.
I thought, yes, I forgot about that part, about the, do we have to reswear in sometime? Do we do that today or not?
We don't resweare in.
That's all for, okay.
Correct.
All right. Okay, so we will be adjourning the board meeting to reconvene as the Joint Powers Authority. So adjourn the meeting and call the meeting order for the Joint Irrigation District Joint Powers Authority. First item, Agency Investment Fund Adoption Adopt Policy 2021-02, authorizing investment of monies in local agency investment funds.
And President, would you mind a little explanation of this one?
Yes, please.
Okay, I'm happy to do that. So most agencies, including the Nevada Irrigation District, we use the, what we refer to as LAIF, which is the Local Agency Investment Fund. It's a fund, it's a statewide fund. Essentially, it's our savings account. So most agencies only have one LAIF account. It has come to my attention just recently when this item came forward, staff had brought to my attention that we routinely adopt a LAIF signatory item and also authorization for investment of monies into LAIF for both NID or normal board and for our Joint Power Authority. When this came to my attention, I said, well, why would we have two LAIF accounts? It doesn't really make much sense. But we do have a very small amount of money in the existing LAIF account underneath the JPA, and I will be dealing with that and closing that account out because it's not necessary. So the JPA is essentially when you are going to be a financial authority and do a bond issuance. So there are specific requirements for doing that, for tax-exempt bonds, essentially what it is. So in the future, we won't be doing this. So this is somewhat of a formality. But if you have any more questions, I can try to answer them.
How much money do we have sitting here?
It's like $440.
Oh, no.
Yeah, we definitely don't need it.
Not even for the time it took to print this paper.
We'll fix this, so that's the one, yeah, we actually, another, yeah, we'll take care of it.
Very good. Thank you for that explanation. And reminding us what is the purpose of the JPA, because I have to ask that every time we talk.
I know, me, too.
Okay, so we need a motion, oh, we need public comment on item number four. This item, if you'd like to comment, start on your phone today. Okay, seeing none, we'll undertake a motion.
Motion? Yeah, I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution 2021-02, authorizing investment of monies in local agency investment funds. I'll second.
Okay, Madam Secretary, you call the roll, please.
Division 5?
Yes.
Division 1?
Yes.
Division 3?
Aye.
Division 4?
Aye.
Division 2?
Aye. Okay, next is reorganization of the board for the JPA. Through the 2022 elected and appointed positions.
So, Mr. President, you just need a conforming motion to appoint you again as the president, Karen as vice president, Jennifer as treasurer, and Karen, excuse me, and Chris as secretary.
What kind of motion did you say?
A conforming motion to what the NID Board of Director officers are.
Conforming motion, there we go. Thank you for that clarification. Okay.
I.
You'll try. You're doing a good job.
I am making a motion, a conforming motion to reorganize the board and approve the 2022 elected and appointed positions pursuant to the Water Code, Section 21, 213375 and 21376.
Second.
All right. Any public comment on this item? Start on your phone. Hey, Madam Secretary, you call the roll, please.
Division 5?
Yes.
Division 1?
Yes.
Division 3?
Yeah, me.
Division 4?
Aye.
Division 2?
Aye. Okay, with that, we've reached our agenda and ready to adjourn the meeting.
Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.